Welcome, everybody, to the Nottingham Select Board's Monday, October 21st meeting. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple nice activities happened this weekend over the town. Thank you for the PLIA for doing their annual road cleanup on 1426. It looks wonderful driving down there. It's amazing to see how much stuff that's acquired over the six months time-wise. We did have the Halloween thing. Tim, if you want, you talked to Courtney about that. How'd that go?
Fantastic. And I know probably a few people here were there, but there were over 700 people that attended the event this year, so.
That's huge.
Big turnout. She was expecting maybe 500. Last year they had four, and she was thinking with the nice weather, but it was packed. So the big issue was obviously parking. So they're gonna try to plan it better for next year, but I don't think she was expecting 700 people to show up.
The weather, too.
Yeah, the weather, I mean, everything worked out perfectly. So, but yeah, I was, I mean, everything went smooth, though. She had a bunch of volunteers and everybody had a blast, so it was really good.
Wonderful to hear.
Thanks to the Rec Department for organizing that one.
Yeah, good to see the community activity, the people that came out.
Right.
You know, in support of that, so. All right, start off like normal. Payroll manifest, everybody get a chance to take a peek at that?
Did.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the payroll and manifest for October 15th, 2024.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we not approve a manifest for 9/16?
No, I think that's the minutes.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion on the minutes?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 16th, 2024.
Second?
Wait, one second, though.
The public minutes and the non-public minutes for September 16th, 2024.
And that included the correction already for me voting, I saw it crossed out, so.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstaining.
Perfect. John Decker's abstaining. One more.
Make a, make a motion to approve the minutes of 9:30.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Abstaining because he wasn't here. Perfect. Reports from committees, boards. We have a planning board meeting coming up Wednesday with this two cases. I wasn't able to attend the other one before, I was on vacation. But one case is new, it's on Stevens Hill Road for like a back lot subdivision. And then the second one is a continuation, which is on the other side of town. Near Nottinghamly, I forgot the name of the road, my bad, but it's that continuation. This is like their third time coming, and that's for a four lot subdivision.
How many lots is the one on Stevens Hill? Just one?
Two. Well, there's one, but they're gonna make another one.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of stuff going on for the planning board. So as we talk about other things tonight, we'll get back into that. Anybody else? Anything from the Rec?
Well, we just went over the event they had this weekend. They do have a nonprofit that's forming, Friends for Nottingham Parks and Rec. And they're in the beginning stages of incorporation and getting their nonprofit status, all of that. So they're hoping in the next six months to have that, but they've got a lot of people that are interested. And if you are interested, I'd reach out to Courtney Dubal at the Rec, and she can point you in the right direction if you want more information. But right now, their focus is basically on fundraising to build potentially tennis courts, pickleball courts, a playground over at Marston. So they really wanna really assist Parks and Rec with some of their larger expenditures in the future. And so it's really good, a lot of great energy, a lot of a diverse group of folks from the community, so it was nice to see. Not a whole lot else going on. They do have a flag football tournament, not for us adults, but for the children under 18 on Veterans Day. I think this is their third or fourth annual, and it's grown every year, so that's over at Marston. But there's information to sign up. Kids don't have to have experience playing, it's just a really fun day. It's like a big, big tournament. Kids play at least three games, and it's really fun. So go to the website if you're interested in signing up. And then with Budget Committee, we did meet on October 3rd, and we're working towards finalizing some bylaws for the committee to kind of abide by. And hopefully we'll have those at the meeting on Thursday is our next meeting. At that meeting, Allen updated the committee on the town's year-to-date numbers, and then also the school updated the Budget Committee on their budget. So they're at 23% to budget so far to the first quarter of 2000, their business quarter of 2024. So they're just, just below budget. They're still working on quotes for modular units for the school to expand, but the only quote they received was for trailers. They're looking for more of permanent type structures, but that's not what they're getting quotes for. So I think they're holding off until they get some quotes. And then again, our next meeting is this Thursday, we're gonna be reviewing default budgets and then finalizing our, our bylaws. And then the Election Committee, we met with Ellen and Chief Woodman, the moderator, Dawn, and Lori, our wonderful clerk, to discuss safety and continuity, a continuity plan for our elections, really talking about the upcoming election of November 5th, which would be, have a huge turnout over at the school, and then talking about the primary and some adjustments going forward to make with holding our elections at the school. But really developing a plan for if we lose power, if there's a storm. So our moderator, Ms. Arnold, did a great job putting together a document for us to review that has some really detailed items to think about is, you know, if we do lose power. Like if we lose power and the school does not have a generator, we can't run the election, what do we do? The nice thing is, is EverSource actually provides generators, and most schools have them, so the demand for generators for schools is not that high for them. So Chief Woodman was pretty confident that we could get one if needed, but.
That would still be an inconvenience.
It would be a very big inconvenience. Not something I wanna think about happening, but hey.
Everybody's bringing their own.
Right.
Great. Okay, perfect. Anything else from you guys?
CIP meets this Thursday before Budget Committee.
All right. Stevie, all set?
All set.
Town Ministers' Report?
The first thing that I wanna mention is the Veterans Memorial that's located over at the Blaisdell Library had to be moved when they were installing the Bleachfield for the Septic. Julie Fred Gray and, I'm sorry, one of his names is.
Joan, I know, I heard about it, but yeah, you can tell about it probably.
They said they'd stop in to see me on Friday and asked how the memorial ended up over there. I can find all of the paperwork back to when we acquired it, when we put it out for both, I think it was like late 70s, early 80s, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. So the only thing that I can surmise is that when the town offices were over at the Old Town Hall, you know, there was a location for it to be in the beautiful landscaped area of the library. So the question is, the trustees have, or not the trustees, but the library staff in general has found a new home for it, kind of in that front garden area, to replace a tree that they removed. So they could fit it into that space, but the question is, is do we want it to stay there? We kind of have left it up to the library staff or whomever to maintain around it. It is around a large monument that needs a monument company to come remove it and relocate it safely. So they have made tentative arrangements with a company to come do that, but the question is, is do we reinstall it over at the library? A suggestion was made to put it out here by our flagpole, which I understand that there's a time capsule buried beneath here that will be opened at some point. So that's an option, Nottingham Square was another option, just to see where you would like it to have, hopefully its final resting place, where it can be there.
I would think I had the highest traffic spot, which would be here, or continue to have in the library, but the square is beautiful, but I just think it would get.
Yeah, nobody's, there's no place to park at the square or anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I kinda like it, the library idea still, because it's been there for some reason, and they have a new spot for it. I start to worry about, you know, if we start moving things, then what hap, you know, thinking about other things that have to happen.
Well, that's why they kind of made provisions with a company that would be able to do that. Our highway department was able to remove it from its existing location and securely place it where it is now, but to permanently install it again would require some other professional.
You suppose it originally got there because the World War II was across the street, so they put this one on the other side of the street, so.
It's just before, right now, in its existing location, it will be underway with snow removal. I hate to say that four-letter word, but it's coming soon. So we would like to try to get it moved from its existing location, hopefully we don't move around too much. So if you think that the library is the best place for it, or if you want to.
My only concern with, I mean, I think here, probably the best location would be near the flagpole, but there's a lot of erosion around that. So it's mainly concerned about putting it anywhere downhill.
Yeah, exactly. That's kind of what my thoughts were, the flagpole wasn't optimal, in my opinion. Especially if there's a time capsule in there that's gonna be unburied at some point, and don't wanna drop it right on top of the time capsule and not know, you know?
I mean, that doesn't take up a lot of space, but still.
But still, it's like.
Could it be installed anywhere in front of the gymnasium doors? I don't know what's underneath there for infrastructure, like I don't know if that, where our lead sign.
Personally, I'd like to see where they're proposing for it to go.
Yeah.
So I personally think we should put it off until our next meeting and go and view libraries proposal.
Our next meeting is Monday, so we have this week to look.
But the library would prefer to have it here.
I think they were willing to keep it. They were going to, you know, they, they had found a new home for it, but it did go. There was questions raised about why it was over there. Now is the time to move it, should it be moved?
Should it be moved.
Right.
Well, the town offices were there, too. Well, everything was over there.
Right.
Town offices, fire department, police department, everything was in that little corner, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, and it does make sense to question it at this point, because, you know, it's, has to get put someplace. So before they, they just wanna make sure they're doing the right thing.
So do you wanna take the week to?
Yeah, we should make it.
I would, sure.
But we shouldn't let it delay too long, we'd like to get this back up.
With the nicer weather that we're experiencing this week, the monument company was anxious to move it this week, but they've got the brakes on it for right now until we can get a decision on where it will be going.
Could we have, like, Steve Rollins take a look at around the flagpole area and see if he thinks if we could make some adjustments there drainage-wise? So that if it, because I think it would be, that would be a nice spot for it, right? It was here, it's a lot of visibility.
Right, but that was part of the drainage problems and.
That's what I'm saying, if he can fix, I know they worked on fixing some of it a couple of years ago, but it's still your roads.
Right, which is one of the reasons I'm kind of, don't think that's a good idea.
You know, and general public, skip, ask away.
If I remember correctly, it has names on both sides? I'm not sure it does, but. Don't think so? But anyway, I was gonna say, if it has it on both sides, maybe I'll deal with it for trees or.
You mean?
Well, this is just the first area to flood, though, because it's a little spot.
Where will it be for Veterans Day, which is right around the corner?
We don't know, that's what we're gonna figure out this week.
They'll never move it at time.
It might, I, that might just happen. I'm sorry, I think, I mean, just. I mean, we can keep it where it's standing right now, but it's not where it's gonna permanently go. And do we have the time and, you know, to get it there and get it done? You know, it's. Yeah. So it's, I mean, we're gonna do our best, but first we gotta figure out where it's gonna go.
Is it worthy of having an event in front of it where presently sits in its storage position?
Yeah, I don't even, I haven't even seen where it sits.
It's, it's right in the front of the parking lot, right along the edge of the parking lot.
So it's up.
To the right of where the mail drop.
So it's, yeah. Yeah, sure, probably we could do that, sure, why not?
Historically, the town has had an event there.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think they'll be moving on Veterans Day, so.
I think we do have a window to move it within the next week or two, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Maybe that could be the event. Part of the event, tie it all together.
All right, so that's the discussion on the 28th. A portion of Deerfield Road was milled and top coated last, late last week. I think it started on Thursday, they wrapped up on Saturday. There was also Highland Ave that received a decent top coat and that completed a drainage project that was starting in 2023. So that wraps up the paving, paving and road reconstruction for 2024, and that was, that was taken care of out of funds that were left over from 2023. Obviously, they didn't have a warrant article that was successful in being passed this year. Under RSA 419, there's an annual obligation for you to review and approve an investment policy. We already have one in existence, we review it every year. Last year, we reviewed and we adopted it in November, so I've included that in this packet for you to just take a look at. I'll put that on the agenda for the November 4th meeting. But additionally, I would like you to take a look at the fund balance policy. This is a discussion that's gonna be coming up as we get into the budget review. We'll be determining what our percentage of retainage is as soon as we get the 2023 audit completed, which I'm hoping is near completion. So the fund balance policy is in there for you to review as well, and also included the purchasing policy, just so everybody's aware of it. In light of some recent events that happened in one of the seacoast towns, there was a misuse of funds. So I did wanna just make you and the public aware that the town does have an active purchasing policy, which includes a separate policy contained within on the use of town assigned credit cards. So we, as department heads, have authority, spending authority up to $5,000 before it has to go out for quotes, bids exceeding $10,000, and formal proposals beyond that. So our credit card policy is much in line with that. We have a spending authority up to $5,000. We have to submit receipts, we have to line item, quote it. It's not to be used for personal uses, it's business expenses only, there's no reimbursement, there's refunding back to the card. So we have put permissions in place to secure that, that type of a situation doesn't happen. It's something that the auditors review on an annual basis, just because credit card misuse can be done very easily. So the only town assigned credit cards are held by myself, the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief. So we have only four, and then we use it according to the policy, so I just wanted to make that statement. So we'll also be reviewing that, just to make sure, you know, if there's any changes or updates to be made to that. That way I can inform the department heads, but I don't see that there should be any change at this point. The general election's coming up, it's gonna be held at Nottingham School Tuesday, November 5th, from 7:00 to 7:00. Stable ballots are available on the town's website, and they're posted here at the town office for anybody that's interested. And Tim already reviewed the attendance at the Halloween festivities last Saturday, over 700, which was great for the Rec Department. We had some general correspondence that came through in the past three weeks, most of which was either forwarded off to a department head to answer, or it's been responded to. I don't think there's anything really left for you to do amongst that. I think the only thing pending is just a question about the road maintenance plan for dirt roads that just came in today, and that's been forwarded to the Highway Director for response. I did write a letter to Superintendent Ronna Hasbrook regarding using Nottingham School as a polling location. There's been discussion back and forth about trying to move some of the smaller elections over here. But as Tim stated, we, as an election committee, met last week, and I think it was general consensus of all that we just don't have the municipal parking to accommodate. And the school is able to give us not only an ADA compliant safe polling location, but they have ample parking, so. And just for a matter of not confusing locations changing back and forth, the school is where it is. So I just wrote a letter to the superintendent and copied off the school board chair the importance of us being able to utilize that space as our polling location for state, local, federal elections. And I think that's pretty much it for this week.
Yeah, something for those elections. Is the school, do we know if the school's gonna be open with teachers in it that day? Nobody, right? Okay, so we're not gonna have the same, okay, perfect. That answers my question, good enough. We'll go any further on.
And that, that was in the letter.
Okay. Well, we don't have any assessing. Anything else, sorry? Uh, no assessing. So action items from the last meeting, we know about the budget coming up, the budget projections. We're gonna have to go over that on Monday. Is there anything else that's not on there that we?
Do we wanna approve the investment policy, go over that, or we gonna wait until?
I'm gonna put it on the agenda for November 4th.
Okay.
Just takes some time to digest.
Okay. That and the fund balance, same thing?
Yeah, and the investment policy, the purchasing policy, and the fund balance, that's gonna be stuff for Mondays, right? November. November 4th.
Next week's gonna be strictly.
Yeah, November 4th, sorry. We did get bids under our general business. We sent out bids for our fuel oil for the town, the propane, and we got back this one. The good news is, it was from Irving, who we're presently using. They're, well, I guess, it's good that we got something back, right? The fixed, the fixed.
We got none.
That would've been really bad. The fixed oil cost for the town will be $2.46 per gallon, and the fixed propane costs will be $1.37 per gallon. And they gave us a, a price on diesel until October 8th. That's not very long.
Big rack pricing, that's why.
Right, so for diesel, for $2.76 a gallon. So anybody have any questions on that? I'm sure you guys all saw it. Okay, it's good to go into an agreement with them.
But the, this is valid till the 18th?
No, that was just the diesel price.
No, this is the fixed rate for heating oil and propane is valid until 11:59 PM on October 18th.
Oh, okay. That was a day that was here. I'll have the clarification on that, I think they did the same thing last year.
Do we all make a conditional approval that if it's still the same numbers, when you talk to them tomorrow, that it's good to go?
That's, yeah. Yeah, 'cause obviously, we can't approve something before a meeting.
And it is only three days, so.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Irving as long as the prices stay at the $2.463 per gallon for fixed heating, for fixed. $2.46 per gallon.
Heating oil.
Heating oil. And then for propane at $1.377 a gallon. And, sorry, diesel price at $2.769, $7.669 per gallon.
That wasn't a fixed price, that's on rack price, so that doesn't really matter.
Right, that one doesn't matter, so I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second on this, and just for the people at home to know, this, if approved and everything goes the way it should be, this runs from November 1st all the way till October 31st of 2025, so full calendar year. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Perfect. Couple more minutes. We know for audit services.
We did not receive a single proposal for our audit services. So I'm going to, as we're wrapping up the 2023 audit with Plazek and Sanderson, I'll be seeking a quote for next year's, for the 2024.
We had the legal services that came, too. I got to read those today, but I wanted to reread them again. This is something that's, I think we should just probably maybe if we make a decision next meeting or by November 3rd on this. But there was some good people, a lot of information there from everybody.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's a lot, ton of information here.
It was more than I could get through.
Yeah.
Very competitively priced?
Yeah, the price was, really wasn't.
But the details, right.
You know. That was important to me, and I wanna read more about how they work with the planning board. With everything that's going on in this town, with our subdivisions, our subdivision regulations, our zoning board, our zoning regulations, we have a lot there, and there's quite a few meeting sets. They say they require legal services, so.
I think there are two of the four that seemed to be.
Better than, right.
And I mean, again, that's something I think should be taken into consideration with all the developments that are going on in town, with everything like that, and the way that our ordinance are read and how detailed they can be. Very detailed, sometimes conflicting between some things, so that, you know, that's why I wanna take a better look at who we might choose.
So what are our priorities in picking?
So prices, like, I don't know, you can go into detail, but in my opinion, it is breadth of services, which again, if you read through, in my opinion, there were two of the four that seemed to offer the most, and also had, I felt, more personnel available in the case of backup, which I think has been an issue for us in the past. And then responsiveness, again, two of the four directly outlined a timeframe for phone call, return of a phone call, return of an email, and then also a letter of recommendation, not a recommendation of.
Legal opinion.
Legal opinion, response with that, which again, in the past, we've been chasing, so.
And I think it'd be good for the board, at least for us, we all, five of us, to look at it.
Right.
We'll narrow it down to two, and then we can actually have a discussion between of us here on which two are there, and go from there and make a decision once we narrow it down to those two.
You guys five different proposals?
Four.
Four. I don't know how much you've had a chance to go through them, and.
To be honest with you, in the prior town, we've gone through this similar, similar process, and I think three out of the four had, so we actually brought them in and interviewed with them, so I am quite familiar with most of them. I would like to take the, the time this week to just call some of their current towns and just see how feel for how satisfied they are with the response time.
Yeah. And I think one of them, the school use is that different than we use at the town, right?
I'm not sure who the school's like the council is.
Anybody?
No. I don't. I thought it was, I, and when I was looking through, like, I recognized that name from the school, but.
When I advertised it, I advertised it on, obviously, the town's website, I advertised it through New Hampshire Municipal Association, and then they also offer a list of legal counsel that represent towns that deal specifically municipal law, have that land use, employment, everything that we would kind of need, so I just made sure that I just included all of those. Glad that we got some response on like the audit.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I just wanted to have a little direction here of what to look through and.
Is, is that, again, this is. Is, is that, again, is it rare to get nobody for audits?
No, it's not rare?
No, I, I don't know.
I'm just asking your experience, like, did it happen when you were?
No, usually there's, there's a response. I mean, we received, we already received one response on the fuel oil and the heating route, but basically that was our vendor and the owner of our tanks.
Are we sending them out? Well, my question is not, I'm gonna not, I'm gonna question it because I have to, you know.
I mean, we could always try.
Are we sending it out to the right people? Are we giving it to everybody that's supposed to? Is it something that, that we can do better? Again, I'm just asking, not saying you're doing a bad job, but I'm just, I just kind of, I just kind of want to say.
The same process of just contacting all the firms that do municipal auditing.
Right. I mean, again, it's just weird not to get anybody.
Right.
You know, we are paying them. I mean, they're gonna, it's, it is a job.
Do you want me to extend it out further? I mean.
I think we should.
It'd be nice to get at least another one, but.
I mean.
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. I just feel that, I mean, again, see where it goes from there, but not having any is not.
Historically, like, when is the, for most municipalities, when is the audit actually wrapped up for the prior year?
Um, you hope that it's wrapped up before September 1st because then it does delay the setting of the tax rate.
But this is the second year in a row.
They go through and do our field review anywhere. They were scheduled in February this year. We ended up with a snowstorm that week, so they didn't come out and do their field work until May. Uh, so we are slightly delayed in that. But I, I mean, ideally, I would think if they're able to wrap up their field review in office for two to three days and then go back and do what they can remotely, I don't think it's unrealistic to expect that we should have it done by August.
So I think whichever firm, if we get more firms, or clarifying if this is the firm we use, that we'd like, I don't know.
It's had news on.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so we're gonna go back to the general business right now. Uh, we're gonna actually go to our seven o'clock appointment. Uh, we have Mr. Duffy here from the BLIA to talk about the milfoil update. And Neil, also, sorry.
I look like a. Neil's the show. I'm just the pretty face.
That's.
You can shoot from there.
Oh, yeah. I have, uh. I have coffee, so I'll leave you guys and leave yous. That's all I'm good.
I didn't think this thing worked that way.
Okay.
Been so long. It's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of this will be a.
Thank you.
Recap for those of you who were here last October, uh, but I needed to go back a little bit to tell you where we were and where we are now. Uh, and what the future looks like. So. That just popped up. So over the history of milfoil in the lake, starting in 2015, this is a number of gallons of milfoil that we found and removed every, every year. And you can see it, you know, it stayed pretty constant. It dipped here. That was the, that was, it was flat for a while, probably because we weren't looking. All of a sudden, we started to get a bigger team, more search areas. It went up dramatically, dropped off here. That was COVID. We had trouble, you know, getting people to be willing to suck on the same mouthpiece as somebody else was dying. Uh, and then all of a sudden, you know, we see what happened. That's at 2022. It grew exponentially. Looking at more areas, it's fragmented, frozen, a lot more sites than it did before. That's what we faced in 2022. Looking at that, we figured that we're gonna be really troubled, real troubled in 2023. So I worked with DES to get a grant, uh, to remediate the milfoil. And the, the black areas, this is the Town Beach Cove up here, this is Gold's Cove down here, and this is the South Channel down here. These were the most infested areas and the DES recommended to retreat those with Procellicor, the herbicide. The areas that were kind of, you know, sort of medium density right here in the Silver Cove, and this is over at the Town Beach, uh, Town Beach area, Sage谷, State Park Beach area, and the canoe rental. That was kind of a medium density area. The rest of the red areas had milfoil all around here, but those were lower density. So the state said, okay, we'll give you a grant to treat these with Procellicor. The gray areas will have a professional team come in, Dash crew come in. And the grant was $52,000. The treatment area was reused somewhat. So we spent 60, well, the state spent 6,500 on Dash, the professional guys that came in and pulled the milfoil, and 32,700, 37,000 for the Procellicor treatment. So that was 100% grant. They paid for the whole thing. That's a one-shot deal. Any future grants are going to be between 20 and 50%, assuming the state has the money. It all depends on what the, what the total money they have is and how many people are asking for it, but it's capped at 50%. So for example, if we had to do this again and the numbers worked out the same, somebody, not the state, would be on the hook for, let's say, you know, $47,000, 41, 40, $44,000. So we'd have to come up with $22,000, town, reserve fund, PLIA, whoever. Uh, and I, and my estimate on, based in, based on what we see today, is that another treatment, if we required one, would probably be somewhere in this range. Uh, so it's important for the town to continue putting money aside for, you know, what might happen in the future. This was the Dash boat, for any of you who don't remember, there's professional crew that come in, they have a big vacuum hose, the divers go down. Instead of bagging the milfoil, they suck it up into this, uh, this tube, which ends up in these baskets on the boat. Very productive. We have, by the way, we have a guy who doesn't live on the lake, lives in town, Jamie Burley, a lot of you probably know, who has spent some of his GoFundMe funds as well as his own, building his own Dash boat. So in the future, if we need some help, he's out there and he'll be able to help with his, his own, quote, private Dash boat. Uh, Procellicor treatment was put in with an airboat, subsurface injection. You can't see it too clearly yet, but there are nozzles in the back here which inject the solution of Procellicor into the water. And it proliferates to the water column and kills the milfoil. This is what the Procellicor results were. This is, this is milfoil before.
So just cause it says, if you go back to one there.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, let's see.
Sorry, man, you go back.
Go back. All right.
Well, the last.
It's called previous.
The last one, the last one you said it had 37 acres was what the Procidocall or Proso, yeah, 37 acres.
Procellicor, yep. 36 acres Procellicor.
So and the, and the cost was basically 36,000, almost 37,000. So it's $1,000 an acre.
Yeah.
Is what it's gonna cost, breaks down to.
Small tree.
And so not, I mean, Tuckaway Lake, 785 acres, not like the whole thing, but there's, there's a lot of, it's a lot of area.
Yes.
That can be.
Could be. I'll show you that later on.
Okay.
Uh, if you treat an acre or two, it's $2,000 an acre. For larger numbers like this, it's more or less $1,000 an acre.
So the worst case, it is, the better price you get.
Right. So then before and after. So here's, here's the chart for 2023. I showed you this up to this point here. Last year, the blue line is what was removed by divers, either our volunteer divers or the professional Dash crew. Obviously, we can't calculate the number of gallons exactly that Procellicor killed. So this is based on my estimate of diving and seeing the amount of milfoil and the density. I've had 10 years of experience with this town. So I think this might be a little conservative, but it was at least 400 gallons. So if you stack this bar on top of that bar, you get somewhere in the neighborhood of 670 gallons of milfoil that wouldn't have to be, that was removed or killed, uh, last year. So you can see, you know, it just kind of goes up exponentially. Okay, 2024. I don't know if you can see the outline of the lake here, but this is up to Town Beach Cove, Log Cabin Island. This is Gold's Cove. This is the State Park down here. This is Tuckaway Shores, Mountain Brook Cove, Niels Cove, South Channel. This is where we found milfoil last year. Found milfoil in every location we've ever found it before. That's important. This is an area that was hit with Procellicor. This was hit with Procellicor, and so was this. We found milfoil there. So you say, well, good it is, but we could have pulled out 200 gallons of milfoil out of here before the Procellicor treatment. We found two plants. So it's everywhere, but much reduced from where it was before. So in all these locations, we found two to four to five plants, smaller numbers, but it's still there everywhere. It has not been eradicated in any single region of the lake. And to John's point, all the red areas, these are all areas where milfoil could grow. It's not there, but it could grow there because it's shallow enough. The whole northern half of the lake could grow milfoil. That's all very shallow, everyone knows the lake. And of course, all these areas as well are all shallow enough for milfoil to grow. That's about 60% of the lake. Worst case, if you go to your point, 700 acres times 60%, you know, multiply it off 120 acres, could grow milfoil.
Well, and additionally, Neil, all the entire shoreline too.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, that would be silly to put that in.
But, but I just wanted to point that out.
Of course, the whole shoreline as well, because that's shallow too. So could happen. So the summary of 2024, what we did was, it's a lot of acres to cover with our divers. I mean, we can only cover about an acre an hour with diving. So what we did was all the non-treated areas, we did what we always do, underwater searches, divers going back and forth, and back and forth, marking, and then our volunteer weed control areas come in and pull the milfoil up, just like we always did. We couldn't do all the areas with a, with a thorough search. So in the treated areas, we did what I call here a survey, just kind of a, you know, random, random walk back and forth. Maybe half the coverage that we've had before, just kind of sampling. So there could be more milfoil in the treated areas than we actually found, but there isn't a huge density right now. We found two plants, three plants, four plants. Could there have been eight plants? Yeah, we should put them in, but it's not a wall-to-wall milfoil it was at the start of 2023. So this year, we took out 30 gallons. Looks great. 30 gallons versus maybe 670 gallons last year. We're in good shape. And we are. It was a good summer. Uh, but as I said in the previous charts, milfoil's still being found in every single area where we found milfoil before. That's very important because, as we all know, it easily spreads. So if we have it in every area, it could easily spread in every area. Uh, the lake coast really still key. Uh, there's a lot more invasive out there than milfoil. Vanmore, Crowleaf, Pon Bay, uh, Naiad, I put a picture of here, uh, this, these are the mussels, Chinese mystery snails, sorry, not mussels. This is Vanmore. Uh, this is a little, uh, small, tiny water nymph. Uh, it's invading a lot of lakes in New Hampshire. So there are a lot more invasive out there than what we have today. And it's the lake coast that are really play the key role in not letting it into the lake. So very important to keep, keep that up because there are a lot worse things than milfoil out there. And just like you guys, you have difficulty staffing positions, we had difficulty staffing the lake coast. We have a few lake coast paid positions, most are volunteers, but we have a few, uh, paid positions at the, at the Fundy at the boat launch. Uh, we, we try to keep, uh, lake coast at, up at Fundy and also at the State Park. At the State Park, it's all volunteers. At the Fundy, we do pay a few people, but we don't pay them. Actually, the New Hampshire Lakes pays them with the money that, you know, comes out of, you know, these, the town budget plus the PLA budget, plus the grant we get from the New Hampshire Lakes. Uh, we can't get complacent, even though the number is only 30 gallons, uh, the northern part of the lake, as I showed you the chart. Uh, the milfoil would easily spread. In fact, it already has. It's spread south of the Town Beach Cove this year into around Log Cabin Island. Uh, so, uh, yeah, that was a month, a month ago we found the new area of milfoil. So it looks like milfoil is kind of getting a hold up in the Fundy area in the northern half of the lake. Or, no, it's not eradicated. Uh, I've heard from several other lakes who had a situation like us, had it treated, great, let's go to sleep. Three years later, but it fades. So going back to that earlier chart that I put up, my guess is, again, this is just my guess. My guess is that, you know, we're, we're right now, we're kind of in this range in terms of gallons. That was this year. I think the slope of this curve is gonna look like that. It's gonna go higher. Because in here, we had many less areas of milfoil. There was some density in this area, but now we have milfoil everywhere in each of those areas. It can spread. So my guess is this curve is gonna, if we didn't do anything, it's gonna ramp up like this. This is how much milfoil we're gonna find. So it's gonna get worse in a few years than we saw a few years after this. That's my opinion, doing this for a decade or more. So that's where we are with the milfoil. It was a good year. Uh, the fact that we didn't have like much ice last year, we would have, we would have thought we had more milfoil, but, you know, it turned out to be pretty good, but odds, we're not at the lowest by any stretch of the imagination. And that's it. Any, uh, any questions?
I mean, do you think that you would use Procellicor as a proactive approach? Like thinking, okay, your numbers are low right now, but where it wouldn't cost as much to treat?
The state won't let us do that.
Okay, it has to be a dense.
They, they want a survey, they want to know densities, and they're not gonna dump the herbicide in the water without a good, good reason to do so. That's why some of those areas, we had a modern on milfoil, they said, no, no, let's just bring somebody in to pull it out, right? With the grant money. Like, no, they won't, they won't. We couldn't do the whole lake.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, I, you know, spots that you see that are harder.
So, uh, well, as I said already, lake coast program more invasive from entering the lake are important, very key. Prevention is a lot easier than digging out of the lake records in there. We're not searching all the areas of the lake, uh, so we really depend on our weed, volunteer weed watchers. And the milfoil team is still out there, you know, diving, searching, marking, extracting milfoil. And, uh, it's important that we continue supporting the lake coast with the PLA and town contributions along with the New Hampshire Lakes grants. And also important to build that reserve because like I said, the state is not gonna pay for this again, not, not 100%, maybe not even, maybe 20%. So we could be facing a big bill, so that even though we don't have much milfoil today, we could be facing a big bill two, three, four years from now. I will say that, uh, this has been, Procellicor's been approved since 2019 in the state. And so far, the results look good even over three, four, or five years. But not all the areas are treated with Procellicor, and as you can see, we're still finding it in each of the areas.
And we've seen the bloom of those areas over the past years where, when we first started, when you first started finding milfoil, how big the patches grew, even when you think you were getting a lot, there was five more plants, five more on top of that.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
You were pulling it, so.
Not only that, well, we go with, we've been to places like this year over in, uh, in one of the coves, and there were five plants. We pulled them all out, small plants, relatively small plants. We pulled them all out. Three weeks later, they were all back. Pulled them all out. Another month later, they were all back. This stuff is, is tough. It's like candy lines, you know, lawn. Unless you have the tap root out, you know, it grows back. And we have measured it. I have measured it. I've seen it grow an inch a day. I have measured the plants. It grows in hand growth each a day. I've told it can grow two inches a day, but I've seen one inch a day. So, yeah, it, it proliferates very rapidly.
And it's easier to spread.
It's easy to spread. It fragments, yeah. A lot of the plants we're seeing, you know, we see the top sheared off, which means, you know, proper, proper wash or something, cut them off, fishing line, whatever, and it'll float, sink and regrow. Yeah, it fragments really easily.
But may even be self, may even be self-releasing, self.
Oh, yeah. Self-fragments.
As part of its own intelligence to spread and populate. It's crazy stuff.
Any other questions?
Can I, can I just give you a little, since last time I was here, I talked about her? Tom Duffy, 28.
Oh, I didn't. Neil Samuel, 63 Shore Drive.
Tom Duffy, 28, Tuckaway Shores Road. Uh, reporting on, uh, the grant that we have, we have written our letter of intent. Uh, John joined our BLIA group, so the letter of intent went out under the town's signature. We should be hearing, they're, they're reading all of, or reviewing all of the letters of intent, uh, this month, and we should begin to get awards in January. We believe that, we're hoping that they pay for some of it. We asked for about $70,000. I think we asked for $69,000 or something like that. So, um, which pays for the engineering study, which updates the watershed-based plan. So it's a plan. They, they like to do this every 10 years. So we have a plan and the engineers measure, uh, the amount of phosphorus and other nutrients that are coming in. They, um, they do, uh, an inspection of the lake to see where it's coming in, where the high loads are and so forth. And then introduce and recommend treatments for that. We had our last one done in 2008, as I had mentioned, so we're 16 years. It'll be 17 or 18 years by the time they're probably finished with this. Um, we think that everybody who applies probably is gonna get some money. It's a 604B grant. There isn't a lot of 604B money. So out of the $70,000 that we're looking for, maybe we get, maybe we get 20, but we start with the 20. We can. The engineers gave us a schedule so that they can. can, they can perform their work in, in doses. We plan to apply to the state revolving fund, uh, which is a larger fund, it's actually a loan fund, but they forgive the loans. Uh, and to do that, that's, uh, in May? May?
Tom, what was the name of the grant you applied for?
Six oh four B. But there was some good news recently, uh, because of all of the, uh, of all of the publicity that cyanobacteria blooms have gotten, I'm sure anybody that's read a paper or listened to WMUR has heard about it. Uh, even Governor Sununu, um, was not happy with the DES, because they were warning people to stay out of the water where they see cyanobacteria, and Sununu thought that they were helping to kill the tourist industry in the summer, so it got a lot of publicity. As a result, Sununu asked the state to create, uh, to apply for ARPA funds, the same funds that are fixing the campgrounds, the ARPA funds to, uh, to fund, uh, studies and eradication of cyanobacteria. This is new money, it's half a million bucks. And, uh, so, I'd like to request that, uh, we join again with the town and John, and we apply for some of that money. That will probably finish, we'd like to apply for enough so we can fund our whole, uh, water-based, uh, watershed grant. Sound good?
Yeah, I could do it.
And it's kind of good news. Fresh money is always good news.
Hopefully. Somebody's got to get it. Hopefully it's us.
I wanted to bring you up to date on that, and, uh, if there's any way we can form a co-op and get some of that dollar thirty-six propane, I mean, that's a good price.
Skip?
Uh, I'm assuming from the report, there's no natural solution to this thing, like certain type of fish, or moose, or-
Milkweed, milkweed.
A bunch of moose.
Uh, milkweed.
Milkweed, uh, no, uh, there were some weevils that do a little bit of damage, but, you know-
Those little brown things?
No, no, no.
You can eat those.
Those are Chinese mystery snails, they're sold at PetSmart. We have a letter to, a kind letter to PetSmart, actually, filling them, asking them not to sell those kinds.
Weevils don't eat much, and the other thing is, you have this law of unintended consequences, you get the weevils in, and all of a sudden, you-
You have a problem.
Next question. There must be something that eats it.
Thank you, Jim.
Weevils wobble, but they don't fall down. Weevils wobble, but they don't-
Thank you, guys. Do you guys have any questions or anything on that?
No.
Those are informative.
Okay. Always is.
Awesome.
Uh, a bunch of presentations?
Very limited tonight.
That's okay.
Now, we have, um, Dr. Lai in town, and I also have Sam from the Conservation Commission. Do you guys need to draw up any references?
Yeah, we don't have you any particular order, so just-
So, I'm going to go over the town clerks, budget, and then, no, or not, if you want to, or the election.
Okay.
So, as I was preparing-
Hang on, I'll try and find it.
I realized that this was the first time I had seen, I asked, once after it revised, after the-
We don't have colors on hers. We don't wear colors.
Bring your own crayons.
Remember, you had a meeting, and you talked about it, and you discussed it several meetings, and, so this was the first time I saw it, and, do you have, you have hobbies right there, right?
Yep.
So, the salary line confused me, because it was what I proposed. And so, if it's what I proposed, does that mean that we got increases? I don't know. So-
And I think the reason why it got overlooked is because every other department had, it was relying on that merit compensation pool for any increase this year, so we removed the merit compensation pool, but this individual salary line was calculated with the increase, so we didn't end up reducing that back to the two thousand and twenty-three rate wage level.
Okay.
So, I'm just putting that out there. Um, so I calculated it, it increased it again, in case it stayed, otherwise, I don't know what to say, even say otherwise. We'll pretend that it went through, which means that we owe, we're owed back pay from January first to today. The fees are, the fees are what they are. We can't dictate them, they just happen. And I also learned that the conferences that we are required to go to are to be paid for by the town. There's an RSA about it, thirty-one colon eight. So, even though it was taken out of the budget, I was unaware that it was taken out of the budget, because I hadn't seen this yet, and I applied for it, and we went, and we were scheduled to go when I saw this, in a couple of days, so, we went. It was a very good conference too, especially the ones right before a big election like this, uh, awesome. Postages, postage comes in, postage goes out. And we've been charging a dollar fifty per transaction to, mainly for renewals, ever since I started. I don't know how long before that was a dollar fifty. And postage went up twice this year. So, I'm thinking next year, we, I think about maybe increasing it to two dollars.
It's not unreasonable.
I don't think it's unreasonable either, it's been well over ten years, and that it's been a dollar fifty.
If the cost goes up, it goes up everywhere.
That's right.
So, I don't think there's a discretion, you need to raise it.
Dog licensing last year to a dollar, it was sixty-five cents, and I just increased it by, um, we don't do much printing. I am asking for a, a new workstation, a computer, software, credit card machine. As an example, today, I went into Assist Alana, because right now, we are in the push for the election, and I was working on my iPad. I can't print anything from it, I couldn't input any of the absentee ballot information to Oprah out. There's nothing for me to use there. At some point in time in the future, I think that we should actually have two clerks working, maybe not all four, four or five days, but at least two days a week. Just, one thing, the disconnect between the two jobs. You know, we leave notes, I send her emails, but if you're there, it makes a real difference in the world, when a situation comes up, a question. I might know something, or she might know something, because we saw that customer before, that kind of a situation. Every town has at least two people working.
How, do you have overlap time at all?
No.
Not at all?
Not at all. The only time we really have, well, today, because I just decided to come in, because we had so much stuff to do with the election, but we never work at the same time.
So, you're talking about overhauling your hours?
Hmm?
Talking about changing your hours?
Um, well, if we have two, we could do four days a week instead of five. So, there'll be less days, because a lot of towns just do four days, but they have two people working at the same time. So, twice as much work can get done. So, instead of, say, ten people days, there'll be eight, right now, there's only five.
But would your hours be longer?
Yeah, I guess that-
That's more my question, would you have more instead-
Availability.
Right, exactly.
Right now, we're, we-
So, you'd only cross with Alana two hours during the day, not a full shift, but maybe then, if you're doing the four, you might be open for six hours instead of for, for four hours, but you're, you're crossing over to, is that what you're kind of saying? Are you saying just, they're going to be full, just like-
Yeah, two people there for the entire shift. So, then we'd give an eight-hour day, the way we work now. Plus, and when we're done, after the four hours, there's still an hour to do of work minimum. We have to do the financial closeouts and stuff we couldn't do when customers were there. You know, that might keep that number down. Last Friday, I was there until five, it closed at twelve-thirty, and I was there until five. I wasn't goofing around, and then Alana came in on Saturday, just getting caught up on renewals, because we have so much election stuff to do. In, in an hour and a half, she did the amount of work that normally would take her four hours to do if we had customers, because she wasn't interrupted.
Right.
You know, the, we don't, we can't even answer the phones. And it's sad, I feel bad, I can't answer the phone.
How many people do you have come in during the day, on a weekday? Do you have any clue?
We have, on, if you go by the schedule, we could do twelve. There's always some extra people that come in. I'd say on average, fifteen.
Okay, do you ever have a day in the week that you don't really-
It's within the month, it's usually-
It's all over the place, I'm sure.
It's usually two weeks after we send out the renewal notices, we'll have a couple of slower days.
End of the month's always crazy, because-
And the end of month's always crazy, yeah.
We always wait, human nature, last possible minute.
Yeah, right, Memorial Day weekend's crazy, everyone wants their boat done.
Absolutely.
There's an ebb and flow to it, it's kind of crazy. But right now, because we have the election coming up, we have all the people that want the absentee ballots in addition to the regular customers, so that's, that's a lot. And just responding emails to, I do it from home, because then I can think about it. And I shouldn't be doing it from home.
Do you have, do you have a proposed schedule that you think would work best for the community, but also for the department? You don't have to answer, if you, if you don't have it in mind right now, I don't want to put you on-
I have a million different ideas, and I don't know-
Can you narrow it down?
I really don't know what-
Could you give us a list of all of them?
Hmm? You know, I look at what other towns do.
Mm-hmm.
And it tends to be six hours a day, four days a week, for a town this size. But-
For two people.
For two people.
So, twelve hours times four, basically.
Mm-hmm. Now, some of those towns are also tax collectors, which we don't do that, so maybe five hours a day might be.
That's what you're open.
Open to public.
And then an hour.
A minimum of an hour, just to do the close-up and take care of stuff that you can't do when people are there.
But if you had two people, if you had two people, you might not use that hour?
Hmm?
If you had two people, would that hour be reduced, the time you spend after?
It would be reduced, it could be reduced, because-
You could have two people wor, I mean-
You had two people working, and you're pretty much caught up. You still have to do a close-up. It also could help with the bank transfer, because that bank transfer has to go to the state within twenty-four hours. Right now, Betsy does it, but if there were two of us there, we could do it. Where one person initiates it, and the other person approves it. We can't do it the way we-
Oh, okay, because it's, it's just electronic, one person, you know, the check and balance, basically.
Right. And, you know, sometimes when you go to do a close-up, there's an issue, and it takes a while to resolve. It doesn't happen that often, but it happens. So, that's just, I'm just putting that out.
Could you, well, could you just put more thought into, I guess, what you would propose to see? And then, the cost? What you think would be best for the department and the town, so that we could see the numbers? Not right now, but in the next couple of weeks.
It might not be till after the election, because we have a lot of stuff going on right now.
Maybe during the downtime of November fifth, we can put something together.
Yeah, yeah, that's another one, between absentees.
Yep.
Um, so that equipment line includes additional equipment, computer, printer, credit card machine.
So, is that in here twice, from the? You said you wanted another laptop, so that extra computer here, could that be a laptop?
I don't want a laptop. I could use a laptop, I suppose, if I had a mouse and a keyboard, but-
Right.
I, I think it's much, I think a regular workstation would be better.
Yeah, you don't have any point of having to take it?
Well, I, so the line that's two up from that, you have the additional workstation there, and then you have the additional PC in the equipment line.
What, what line are you looking at?
So, equipment, maintenance, and support?
That's different, that's the software that we use, that we do wear.
Okay, so that's only software?
Yep, that's only software. If the two machines, it would be double. I'm sorry, Al, what did you say?
Um, I was saying, you know, there'll never be a time when you have to take it to work remotely from home or what have you. They're normally affixed to the state system, so they have to be within the building.
Yeah. Email is the only thing I can access from home.
Okay. So, there really is no need for you to have a laptop, it would just be a-
No, maybe for the election, but-
That should go under election.
Hmm?
That should be under the election.
Yeah, 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 I would think so.
So, then, the additional cost for next year, proposing is just for the additional software purchase for the additional unit and a new credit card units one time?
Yes. And that doesn't include the manpower. I'm just putting it out there. Baby steps, because it's different. I ended up buying some software that helps the police department and dog officers. One of the customers was sitting there one day, and she was the town administrator, and another time, they used it, the antidote was in the air. Melissa and the police department can look on their phones and see, oh, there's a dog running down the street, who owns it? The dog has a tag, it can find out who the owner is and contact them. That happens often. Because Melissa had no access to anything. That's that. So, I guess the salary line is something that has to be discussed. So far this year, this was as of October second, our offices collected one million eight, eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the town. Um, we've been averaging, you know, a hundred thousand dollars per month, some of it goes to the state every day. It's been up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month, which is a big jump. And I don't know if it's because vehicles cost more money.
I'm sure that's, you do.
Well, we, yeah, we know they do, I mean, I've seen some vehicles that, kind of astounding, but. That's it, most of my expenses are expenses that I can't. I can't cut them down, I need envelopes, and I need toner. Any questions?
I think you answered them.
Yeah?
I think you answered most of them.
Yeah.
Salary is the only thing we had to look into. Well, not the only thing, but-
I mean, I can give you things that one of the towns pay their clerks, you won't want to hear it.
No, we don't. Now, with the budget cycle, we're on.
So, with that said, Dawn, you want to come up and talk about election stuff?
Sure. You look like you're stumped, you know?
I know.
Madam Moderator, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
I've got a recipe next to my notes.
Good.
Oh, there's a quote. It's good. At all, I've got a feastery recipe, in case anyone's interested in the election. Do you have all three pieces, three numbers of the election budget?
Yeah.
Everybody here?
Yeah. I don't have any from the supervisors yet.
Okay. Last year, I created a quick, because I don't really know whoever figured out the actual salary schedule for poll workers, but I did create a spreadsheet last budget season with sort of the worst-case scenario, number of people that we usually use based on, and then that way hopefully we can just look at that easily each year and say, okay, we have this election, that election each year, and come up with a number. So I really only only have town. So the two sessions of the town next year, right, I was right?
Just the town.
Just the town.
Unless we have a special one.
Right, so next year should just really be, and that was only eighteen hundred dollars for that.
Are we going over this year's budget?
We're going over this year's?
So just, just enlighten me for the question. When the elections are all done?
Yes.
There's a big one coming up.
There is.
Are we still going to be on budget for what we proposed last year?
Yes, we should have action.
We should, okay, that
Because I choose you, Manalot.
Well, it, it leads to the question of what you're going to propose us for next year.
Yes, yeah.
This was a big year for us.
This was a huge year. Oh, yeah.
Right, so the people of Nottingham are probably going to ask you, are, why are we spending the same amount of money, or we're going to have so much less we're going to spend because we're not doing the same thing?
Correct.
So I'm asking you
Yes.
where we sit, so that people can get a mindset of where we might be for next year.
No, I think last time, I looked, we still
We're going to be spot on, because according to your estimation, the state general is looking at about thirty-nine hundred. We've expended fifty-nine, twenty-one on a ten thousand dollar budget. So we'll be right at
Yeah, we should be
Ninety-eight hundred.
Should be pretty close, I'm guessing.
With a few hundred dollars.
I mean, well, we had the two town elections and the primary.
And the primary.
So we still have the general to go.
And we had the presidential primary, too. We had presidential primary, we had state primary. Yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully, we're gonna
Hopefully, yeah. Huge just change. I mean, we don't pay our poll workers very much money.
No, it's a large volunteer base, we're just small stipend, right, yeah.
Correct, so
And we thank everybody that does volunteer.
Yes, yes.
It's a long day.
We're here.
Yeah. It is a long day.
But I have been, you all have been pretty well coming, or letting me know when you can't be there, so I'm going to point pro tem, so I've been trying to save on man-hours by using you guys instead of letting people take, because it makes an extra long day. The other piece was, we did pass the warrant to get the new device. I swear, did you get anything? I swear that I heard they got their final certification.
Oh, I haven't seen that.
I tried to go back and Google to find it, and I couldn't, but I didn't see it for you. So we did put in the we did put in the, um purchase for it, right?
Yes, I
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the invoice is, so we can cover it by the end of the year.
I was really hoping we'd have it for November fifth, it's clearly not going to happen. Uh, the ballot counting device, so we will be upgrading that. And then I guess the, I did not realize the warrant was written to also include the grant money in there, because we were hoping to apply the grant money to some other things, so
And I do have to tell the
Yes.
Secretary of State which item we want that grant money put towards, so I'm assuming now I can tell them towards the ballot counting
Machine.
Right.
So And that's just one year, right? Um, the other thing
Yes.
that we will have to budget for next budget is they have the state has decided that we need to use the accessible voting device. Oh, you got the thing that's in the big giant pop-up you guys wrangle and set up there? We now have to use that at town elections, which we have not in the past. It's called the ABS, it's the Accessible Voting System, I suppose, yes?
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable. So, but they have, as always, they're behind the eight ball, because there's kind of a guesstimate at the cost of that, so they're letting us borrow the one we get from the state for this coming March, but then after that, we will have to purchase our own. There is the chatter about them once again doing a grant to hopefully offset that cost, which was somewhere between, it's up to like almost seven thousand dollars for it. And that will also need to be programmed each year for our election, each, well, right.
So the, so the one we have now, we're borrowing it from the state?
It comes from the state loaded for our election. For all the state and federal elections. But we don't have it for our town elections, we don't use it. Now the state laws require us to use it for our town elections.
Okay.
But we have to pay hard.
How many people actually use it?
One if we're lucky in an election. I usually ask one of these guys to use it just to make sure it's like full operation on the day of, but
I used it last election.
Yeah. It's called the ABS, it's an accessible voting device, so essentially, it, um
It's the Big Tent.
It's, yeah, the Big Tent. You see, it, uh, it can you can use it as a touchpad, you can, it's, it's modify, it has several modifications depending on what your disability might be, so that you can go ahead and use that. Accessible voting system, I guess. I'm guessing on the S.
I think that's what it is.
Um, so that will be new expense for us to start adding to the elections. Do you remember what the program cost? Was somewhere between five hundred and
Right, so
thousand election. We always have a huge ballot, and we have schools, so I imagine we'll be on the higher end of it. Actually, I think it went anywhere from the guesstimate is five hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars for every town election to, yeah.
It's kind of more to program it for the town and school election than it is
Yes.
for a state election.
Absolutely, because it's, it's
So much more.
So much more of it.
So that's starting March of two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six?
Twenty-five. So twenty-five, they are going to lend us theirs, we'll just have to pay them. So we'll need to budget that. Did you have those exacts?
Just the programming?
Just the programming, which I would say we should probably budget the twenty-five hundred dollars, because again, they've given us no hard numbers, and I think some of this has come from
It was like, and, and it depends on how many pages you have, which we at least have a million.
I budgeted the twenty-five hundred dollars for March election, the budget doesn't pass until that election.
Well, that's how it is. The first quarter, you haven't
I know. So, well, also That's what I was trying to do in my head, I was like, wait, do we have to pull it on this budget from the current existing budget or the one for
Well, let's just hope our budget doesn't fail.
Next year's budget, right, well
Yeah. So that will need to go in there.
Still has to get paid for, whether it fails or not.
Ah, I know.
Well, next year's a good year, I guess if we, so I guess next year, we really should plan on purchasing one as well, so we will then have it for twenty twenty-six. I would say budget worst-case scenario, because they aren't giving us real numbers. Lori forwarded me an email that she had gotten. I want to say it was a seven thousand dollar
Oh, yeah, it's so stupid.
And again, they're just telling us this, giving us, even roughly giving us numbers this week, when everybody's trying to do their budgets, so, yeah.
And prepping for elections.
And prepping for elections, yeah. Probably the biggest one we'll have in a very long time.
Um, cost for the programming to be between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred, depending on how many elections you have. Town, school, district, village. So that twenty-five hundred to
So it's two, because we have town and school. And I assume the pages won't matter, too.
Right, I mean, sometimes we have two pages for the town, one for the school.
Even feeding the ballots in that device. For us, maybe have a six-page, eight-page, that's going to be
Yeah, yeah, because you've got to feed each one
Yes.
to print them.
Right, I don't even know how that's going to work. It's going to be an interesting
And then the devices range from four to seven thousand dollars. And election programming costs range between five hundred and twenty-five hundred.
Was, that was, that was a Microsoft Surface, right?
Uh, you think that's what it was, a Surface?
I think it was a Surface.
So it's like
I wish that made sense, though, they're still at pretty darn expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's only a useful, they're not used for anything else.
No, right. And then, so the state owns the other one. Does that mean that for their election in twenty-six, that they'll send that one back to us?
Yes.
Yes.
So we still send that unit back to us?
Oh, I don't know.
I would imagine we keep
I don't know if now we'll be expected to use our own unit for our own elections and pay them a program. It'll be an interesting
Well, I mean, it's a state election, they should be providing it still.
Yeah, they don't charge us for state election, they don't charge us for the ballots or the envelopes.
Or the programming and the cards, right?
So And that's the box that we send back with the results at the end of the night.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so
It's about they don't have the option for us to be able to print it for our town election.
Well, I noticed there was a if you didn't catch the price discrepancy, though, from when we're borrowing theirs and paying them to program it versus when we buy it and have it programmed for election, I think there was a cost difference there, too. One said five hundred
Yeah, one did, you know.
It's stupid, because it's just going to sit there
I know. With no other purpose, the rest.
But can you buy that one?
Can you buy the used one?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
What are they going to do with it?
They really have given us very little information, other than, oh, by the way, you're going to need this.
I'd be surprised if they didn't
I've never been, is it a big machine, just take up a lot of space?
Oh, it's this big?
No, it's, it's little.
Well, it's, the printer's pretty huge.
Yeah.
The printer, right, the printer
It's the size of the tent.
The printer takes one of those tote, yellow
One of the big totes.
Right, good, yeah.
Yeah, that must include the printer, too, right?
Yeah, we'll have to borrow
It's like one generation beyond the top matrix.
We'll have to get a bigger trailer?
Yeah.
And you need a headset and a lamp.
And a headset, the lamp.
That's right, and are, do we need our own tent, or do we own the tent?
We own the tents, the tent is, oh, no, the tent is ours, yeah, the tent is ours. You maybe have to think about that.
We don't have any idea how it's going to work. You know, do you send a whole box to this company?
Yeah.
And then they program it and send it back? Or is it just a little card and they send it?
So it sounds like there's a lot of unanswered questions, so
Yes, yeah.
As we get clarity, we'll just have to
Yeah, so that brings up a, a good after we had that surprise special election, and I discovered there was really no budget for it. I wondered about, and we are having election laws that get thrown out, I mean, we get called sometimes or get an email on a Friday when an election's on a Tuesday, by the way, you're now required to do this. So these types of things continue to happen, the demands on us become more and more. I'm wondering if maybe a capital reserve is appropriate for things like special elections, or definitely special elections is when I was thinking about it, like, why do we not have a capital reserve in case we have to have a special election? Because it costs a bit of money, I'm not sure what the, if anyone has a budget number on what that cost. And that one in particular had to be both a primary and a general, so I imagine that costs us quite a bit, so or do you want me grossly over-budgeting every time for you know, for, not grossly, but do you want me planning? Want me to say to you, hey, throw in the number for a special election every time as well?
Well, we've never planned for it in the past.
Right.
So why are we going to start planning, I mean, again?
Exactly, it was the budget I inherited, so it was nothing, it was before me, and I, and then my first year out, I was like, oh, we got a special election and it has to be two
I'm trying to remember in the last twenty years, how many special elections we've had.
Again, it was the only one.
That's, again, so that's why, I mean, I wouldn't
We assume they're rarities, but but then again, you have this ABS thing, where they've given us little to no information in your coming budget season.
So in a special election, we probably don't have to get that program, because it's usually
It was, we had the paper ballot.
Right, we could do paper ballots and stuff like that.
Well, I, yeah.
I'd say no. But that's my opinion.
That we wouldn't need it for a special election, probably not.
That I wouldn't, I wouldn't budget in on the, perhaps we could have a special election in your budget.
Correct, that's why I don't want to do that every year, so is there a small amount, we can maybe have a warrant article for a small amount each year, they were earmarking in case of
You're just adding another thing to be programmed.
And you're adding more, more warrant articles, I think that when we see, again, this is just my opinion, the more warrant articles we have out there, the less chances that people are going to be willing to vote for things. They're going to be probably turned off by the negativity of how much the overall people were, were asking for. Or, you know, what the town's asking for, not just me, but, but, so I think we won't, that's a whole discussion, we'll have some other time when we get there, but
Really technically, elections are your budget, so it's totally your choice, I just want to throw it out there, because that was a surprise to the new moderator, and I was like, wait, what's a special election? That would be, so And the other thing I wanted to chat a little bit about, and maybe now the ABS has kind of thrown an even bigger wrench, but again, the, one of the laws that changed that we got about a three-day heads-up for was that reconcile, and reconciling an election is now required the night of, so that envelope that goes to the state barracks used to just contain like one page that I gave, sort of those soft numbers, so to speak, and then the supervisor spent the next two days, and Lori and I self-spent the next two days to really make sure everything matched perfect, and we do before we leave the night of, you know, we're kind of like, but
Oh, we're with you, we know.
You know, you know, so you see that process that goes on, so now we're being asked to do that all the night of, which we usually do in forty-eight hours. We usually spend two days doing, I usually have till five P.M. on the Thursday after an election. They now want all of that, those reports sent the night of. Yeah.
What is of the night of, if the elections are, there's no way you're going to get it finished by midnight, because I predict that we're going to be sitting there probably till after midnight with all the stuff.
Yeah.
Let's just call it that, that we're going to see.
So I've gotten better and better each election, I have learned to create a spreadsheet that I use the last town election as my sort of dummy template, because there were so many weird oddities in the election, to create a spreadsheet that like pops in as many of my numbers as I can night of and sort of calculate for me, but that is just one leg of the stool, there are three legs of the stool, it's the they want that checklist, so those ladies are counting up that checklist by hand at the end of the night, and they want that number. They want the ballot inventory, which that I usually have night of, and then they want the, you know, the other leg of stools, I usually reconcile three races. And make sure that like, you know, if there was a board of selectmen, run one person running for office for board of selectmen, I make sure the number of votes, overvotes, undervotes, write-in, also equal the number of people who showed up to vote. So, and they want those numbers to be within five of each other, those three legs of the stool, so most of the mistakes are obviously with, you know, we're human, so we're checking on the checklist, you know? There's like five Steve Welch's. You might be chatting and check the wrong, you might check Steve Welch's son instead of Steve Welch, and then, you know, we usually spend those next forty-eight hours kind of fissuring out that stuff, you know, there are times where like, Dawn, do you remember, so I started to put the two and two together, because I was like, why is there so much chatter about poll pads? So I know it briefly got brought up here, and like, some not correct information got put out there, so I wanted to bring it back. The poll pad is essentially an electronic version of the checklist. So it does several things, it will help with our line control issue, because a poll pad, essentially, it's a iPad, right? And it, the day bef, well, not the day, but sometime, once the ballot supervisors are done with the checklist that they would print, essentially it's a iPad, right? And it, the day bef, well, not the day, but sometime, once the ballot supervisors are done with the checklist that they would print, they will download it all onto a memory card or, and upload it into the company's protected server that will feed these poll pads. So now we have the checklist on these poll pads. No more alphabetizing. So if we have three poll pads and a whole line, anybody can go to any poll pad. They're, all their information is in the poll pad. Either the clerk can start typing in the name and it'll pop that person up, or they can actually scan IDs. And there's a little barcode and everybody's ID, so that will make sure that we are not making any more mistakes. And I reached out to other, every, you know, all the moderators in the state and said, who has these? How do you like them? And one of the questions I asked are people, they said ninety-nine percent of people are happy to give their ID and scan it. I know some people don't like that and that's fine. We have another version. Then it prints a little ticket, which is another opportunity for, you know, we thought how we might use that is we might give it to the voter, have the voter check it, make sure that is indeed Steve Welch one, not Steve Welch two. And then they exchange that little ticket to the ballot clerk to get through ballots. So I think in the beginning it would all still require some, you know, fairly normal amount of ballot clerks, but down later, down the line, you should be able to reduce ballot clerk.
So everybody's at home, it's clear, this is not happening on November fifth.
No, this is not happening on November fifth.
Just.
This is something where it started to talk about.
If somebody's listening to you right now and they come on, we just wanna make sure that.
This is not happening in November.
Thank you.
This is, uh, this is the future. This is where it go, is going, but fit to the state is really, I mean, the whole new elect, the whole new election manual has everything for now, your procedure with a poll pad versus with, you know, I think we're the last New England state to be still using the manual checkbook. Um, and we will still keep a hard copy of the checkbook, but now it'll be tucked in a quiet corner of the room with two of our most seasoned ballot clerks. We'll use those receipts to check in the proper person. So hopefully it cuts down mistakes. More than anything, it cuts us down to fifteen seconds of voter check-in time, which is huge. Um, but the really big thing is at the end of the night, I have an automatic number. So I already know how many people, and while the supervisors can still use as much time as they want after to, you know, double-check their work or to enter those people into the SVRS, the statewide voter registration system, um, they do have the option to also take the reports of all checked-in voters and scan them. So that would also help eliminate some of their mistakes at the end of the night when like, if you have a whole page of voters but only three of them checked in, you still have that whole page of voter scan codes there. And sometimes when they're scanning, they might grab the wrong code. This will give a report that eliminates that if they want to use that. Supervisors don't have to use it. We don't have to have a pad for the supervisors at first. But if the supervisors want a pad, they can also in real time add new registered voters. So the minute, they add them into the poll pad, it jumps to all the ballot clerks. So now when that person goes back, they can be checked in like normal, like anybody else. Um, and absentee, sorry. There's, they don't call it the moderator pad. They call it the absentee voter pad, as all of you know, because you worked in election. One of the challenging things we have, and I, I'm not sure how it's even gonna work on November fifth. We have two-hundred-and-fifty absentee ballot requests right now. We have to check those voters in on top of all the other voters checking in. The, this, the poll pad has one pad specifically that the moderator can sit there, or the assistant moderator, whoever I assign, and check in. That one pad would be dedicated just for checking in all the absentee ballots. So elections are changing. I think our absentee ballots are higher. It was a little more expensive than I had hoped. Um, so a poll pad with its little, is that with its printer? I think is fifteen-seventy-five apiece. So initially, we probably start with the three, or maybe just two for C and then.
Fifteen-hundred-seventy-five.
Fifteen-seventy-five. That's a one-time fee.
One-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-five, okay. When you say fifteen, people might get the wrong, one thousand five hundred.
One-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-five dollars.
Two-thousand?
For the actual pad. Um, no, that's the connect fee. I do have my glasses on today. Uh, they thought we'd probably need three, a minimum of three to, and then the moderator pad. There is a one-time connect fee of seventeen-fifty. And then each year, each pad, there's a programming fee of three hundred dollars. And then there's an election. So basically updating the software for each pad. So the ongoing cost would be three hundred a year per pad and then three hundred, um, for each election, but not per pad. So they, and then eventually they think within the next two years, it also will automatically feed into the voter registration history, which is what the supervisors spend weeks trying to then transfer all of that information in. So hopefully that'll make their lives a ton easier when they actually take that next step. So it was something we wanted to bring to you and consider and talk about. Human error is unfortunately continues to be sort of the tough part and probably what is slowing us down end of night. And we're all exhausted on top of it. So now to try to do these reports, end of the notebook is incredibly overwhelming to me. And, you know, I was quite proud that I pulled it off. Last election, but that was primary, we only had twelve-hundred, twelve-ninety-one, something like that, thirteen-hundred-one? I can't remember the number now. So, and an election where we're probably gonna have over four thousand turnout, or the real hard one is actually gonna be our town elections with those eight-page ballots and trying to reconcile. When you have all those write-ins and all those, that is when a race gets a lot more complicated. So, um, and again, I did reach out all over the state. Everybody who has them loved them.
And at the conference that we went to recently, everybody loved them. I said, you have to get them.
Lori brought.
They were just overwhelmingly, you have to get them.
Getting the pads?
Getting the pads.
Okay, just, you know, I'm making sure that I'm following along, but, you know, sometimes when I'm losing concentration of what you're talking about, I wanna make sure the people at home aren't losing concentration because we kinda just.
The pads. The people who have been using these poll pads overwhelmingly love them. They just think that they're great and.
What do they look like?
iPads?
Yeah, an iPad.
Here's an iPad.
An iPad. Comes with a tiny little printer that prints receipts. They look like an iPad. I think they have a stand, too, if you want them on the stand.
And just, you know, I mean, you just literally proposed twenty thousand dollars for the stuff that you're gonna need for the next couple of years in election.
No, the price tag on that, I think we got a quote from them for like year one was like ten for the pads. Again, this was before we knew about the ABS.
Pads, programming, the ABS machine, the, I mean, that's what I'm saying, overall.
The ABS is not an option. The ABS, I don't, we don't have.
You're literally just telling us right now that in the next year or two, that we're gonna see a cost level of something like ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars.
At some point, they are probably going to require these. Right now, they have not.
I don't think, I don't know whether you came up with the twenty thousand.
Again, I'm just.
He, he was estimating between the.
Everything you just talked about tonight.
ABS system, the programming fees, all of that.
Yes. And the programming fees, again, each year, they would be, that won't be a yearly.
So I'm not that far off in my number, but I'm just saying in general.
It's closer to fourteen to fifteen, but, yeah.
We have got.
If we purchased all the pads, we just, I think when we talked about five pads, one for the supervisor, one for myself, the startup was like ten grand, I believe, was the quote for that.
Yeah, and that's not into the machine, which you already said could be up to seven thousand dollars plus the program, so.
Yeah, the quote was thirteen-hundred for a poll pad.
For five.
Thirteen-hundred for eight poll pad.
For one.
For one.
And then the printer, I think. So I think it came at fifteen-seventy-five.
The printer was, uh, three-fifty.
Right.
So the, uh, the one-time connect fee of the seventeen-fifty, does that cover three pads?
Yes, that's just one-time, not yearly. That one's just a one-time fee. The yearly expense is just the three hundred dollars. So if you had five pads, it'd be fifteen-hundred a year. And then a one, a three-hundred-dollar one-time fee per election, not per pad, it's per election. So to program it, so.
The, the, the one-time fee for connecting the, the, uh, poll passes or whatever. Now, if we bought two one-year and two the following year.
Yeah, we could do that.
Would we have to pay that one-time fee twice?
No.
So it's just a one-time fee to connect to their system?
Because they even recommended that, like, start with X amount of pads, see if, you know, like, I think the supervisors went back and forth a couple of times about what they want us to start with or not. We did have LHS come in and show them to us and talk about, um, assistants, we invited supervisors, assistant supervisors, ballot clerks. Everyone was pretty excited. It's really the reconciliation of reports. It's law that we get them in. I'm a little petrified of what it's going to look like. Because as you know, we all are there pretty late, pretty stressed trying to get just the numbers that were required in the past. So now something that we used to have forty-eight hours to do is going to be that night, just required. So, something to think about, um.
I keep telling myself we only have one ballot, so it's gonna go nice and smooth and.
It is a small ballot. I'm hoping for not a lot of writing. So we wanted to put all of that information in front of you to say, next year's a very lean year as far as elections, so.
So why is the state messing with our local elections?
Why are they messing with our elections? Yeah, I don't know. I'm a little surprised they can.
They shouldn't be.
I don't think the state is doing it. I think that federal, I'll just go ahead. The elected officials that work for the state. It's like it didn't come from the Secretary of State.
Right, yeah, but whatever. The state is, the state government is now messing with our local government elections.
Yeah, I don't know if it has, maybe it has to do with like federal disability laws, too.
Maybe that, but, you know, it's like they're demanding stuff on our local stuff, which.
You think they wouldn't be.
It should stay out of.
Honestly, if, I wouldn't even say one person.
Are we gonna, are we gonna be, are we gonna be required to have a public hearing on this? I'm just asking, just for the purchase of stuff, nothing like.
It, no, I mean.
Okay.
It's actually you guys, the governing body, gets to make elections spending.
Depending on whether you hang it up as a warrant article or incorporated into the operating budget, which is actually gonna reduce the year.
It'll be, it'll be one, one way or another, it'll be part of a public hearing.
The ABS should not be a warrant article because it's not an option.
It's gonna be a warrant.
Yeah, just like, you know, I almost had part palpitations a little over the warrant for the, we are going to be required to update our, so. And technically, the governing body, according to election law, is actually the one who is in charge of that spending, not the legislative bodies, so.
So when we come to start talking about our budget and what they're proposing for their budget from where we were this year, because we had so much on our.
Right.
Their balance, so we might wanna keep that number in order.
That's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying. If now is every year.
Right.
That's where the moral of my story was going. It would actually keep the budget more in line with what it is to sort of pull the trigger. We do have the grant. They are talking about another grant for the ABS, so hopefully they'll get those ducks in a row and will have some more funds to offset. I mean, I don't know what happens when you have a warrant for seventy-five-hundred, but then you're able to offset it with funds. Does the rest of the money just automatically?
Depends on how the, well, it depends on how the warrant article is worded.
So if some of that can be applied, because that, the grant could have been applied either the poll pads or the voting device. I just didn't realize we'd written it.
And Lori, one quick question. When we're looking at your budget that you have here, you're talking about eleven thousand dollar increase, right?
With the equipment that she's like, yes.
Yes, the one-oh-two from ninety-one, it's eleven thousand bucks.
Yeah.
That's if the top line stays the same.
Yeah, I, I got you. I just wanted to make sure that that's where, when I looked at the bottom line. What? Oh, that, again, this is, we're not there yet. This is just proposed for what you were just talking about when she gave us her, she.
A town clerk.
Town clerk, you know, the bottom line for where it was budgeted last year to where, which budget for next year, but we haven't got to finalizing anything.
No, no, but, but we were talking about election.
Well, it's because they're about to leave and I just wanted to make sure I, Lori's sitting in front of me, so I just wanted to reiterate that one question directed to her, so that I have it.
And I sent a lot, I did put everything that I babbled at you in a document that I had shared with Tim a little while ago that I shared with all of you. Ah, it was a longer, it was all this, all this, the poll pads, the actual breakdown of the costs.
I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
So I have a question now. Do we have to go before the budget committee or?
Election, how does it, elections are really, you're, it's really rare.
Do I have to sit in front of the budget committee and?
Well, when it comes time for, we're going through.
Right.
Uh, as a town, and, uh, you are the town clerk, so when we go through your section during that big review.
No, 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 she's asking, because the budget committee will invite each of the department heads.
We'll wait for them to.
But isn't that what you're asking? You are gonna, right. Yeah, this one time you're not off. You, you gotta come back.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Wonderful individuals.
Do you need to address them in front of the board or can you address them when they leave?
No, no, in front of the board, too. They offered their time to come talk to the Nottingham Legacy Luncheon Group that's sponsored by the Parks and Recs. And they answered a lot of questions from Legacy attendees.
It was fun.
Thank you very much.
It was very nice. It was really great.
Nice. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thanks.
I can go to the Legacy Lunch now.
John, if you want to invite him up, we're fast.
Is he coming?
Sam?
Sam?
Hello, Sam.
I just thought he'd be overeager and jumped right up in there, so I'm sorry. Sam, Conservation Commission?
And Trails Committee.
And Trails, I'm sorry.
Well, we're just looking over, doing some work on the budget for this coming year. And, uh, everything is, the only change we're making, I guess, is to an increase, uh, because, uh, well, the Trails Committee is looking at publishing a book, uh, not only the trails, but the town center, the historical areas in the town, and probably cemeteries are included and, uh, like that. And as, they were, we, they wanted to put in two hundred dollars to publish this thing, this, and it would probably be paid for as you sold the books and, you know, turn over the money and, uh, buy more books as we needed them. Uh, the rest of the budget, uh, the, I just made one major change, uh, some money that was in the trail development, which we're now into trail maintenance because most of the trails are pretty well-developed. Leaving, uh, instead of four hundred dollars there, I was dropping that down to a hundred and fifty and putting, uh, another river sign similar to the, uh, one out here uh, for the North River, uh, the protected river signs.
Even the big wooden ones that are out there?
Huh?
The big wooden, like, sign out there? Which side of the little?
No, no.
What sign you talking about? I haven't actually looked at, so I have no idea what it is.
The one right, right here where the North River goes under, uh, stage right at once.
That's nice.
It's a, it's a good-sized sign.
On the, on the bridge.
Uh, as you're going southbound, it's on the right side.
Okay.
And on the, coming back, there's another sign on the, on the right side as you come back. I, I've already got, um, bought, I think a year ago, one for the North River up by the school. But they wanted to wait to put that in until the state picks a bridge up there, or whatever they're doing. I thought it was gonna be done this year, but apparently not.
Next year.
But anyway, we're looking at one for the, for the Potawatomi River, which is also a protected river, going on Raymond Road.
I thought there was a sign down there already.
Hmm?
I thought there was a sign down there already.
Not the protected river sign.
The sign that you drive by, I think it was a PLA sign that says.
No, no, there's a little sign.
The water tree?
Yeah.
We, we.
I think it's a water testing sign or something, or something.
Years ago, we put, we bought some smaller signs that we put up on the town roads. I think there's one on the, on Acrylis for the North River.
Hmm.
And there's, uh, one on the Little River, I believe, over on Smoke Street.
Yeah, I thought there was one coming off, over by the, the dam, I mean, after the dam, where the road crosses.
There's two signs. One, one's got the name of the river and down below it is, it's a state, uh, protected river sign.
Yeah, I thought this was just a small protected river sign, but I don't know.
No, it's, it's a pretty decent size.
Yeah, the, the one that's there is like, only like this big.
So you're proposing your thing going down from four hundred fifty dollars to one fifty for this?
Well, they, they cost over two hundred for a pair of them. You need one on each side of the, of, of the river. Because they don't put the signs on, you know. The ones we bought, you know, years ago for the town roads, you know, the name was on both sides, but it was not a protected river sign at that point. But, uh, the Potawatomi River is a state protected river. Uh, North River up to, well, at least, uh, let's see, past, uh, past, uh, you know.
I'm the same way, Sam. I, I know the road. I've been on it a thousand times and you can't think of the name anymore. It kills me.
Drive it all the time.
Yeah, exactly. I'm with you. That one.
Freeman Hall Road.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, uh, we did some on the, uh, on the Little River on, uh, I think there was one on Kennedy at one time. And there is, there is one on, uh, uh, Smoke Street for the Little River. And that's protected all the way up to, um, Menendez Pond Dam. So I was going to get one for the Little River for Route Four, you know, just the state roads. And I'm having trouble with the, uh, L R A C, trying to get them to sign off on it because it's a, you know, a protected river and it should be signed off by them.
Will you be in contact with the state at all during the fact that when they redo the dam on Menendez Pond and there's no water going down the river?
What was that?
When they redo the dam on Menendez Pond, they're redoing that coming up next year? They're gonna drop all the water out of the lake again? Will you be in contact with the state about the protected rivers that, that's feeding?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that, they've already got their permits, I think, through the state anyway, so, uh, they're gonna do what they want.
True, but I mean, it, it, probably the longest river in the town of Nottingham. It starts on one side and goes all the way to the other.
I think they're diverting some down, uh, you know, on one side or the other or whatever, and coffer dams or something like that. So that there's still water going through.
Okay. Just answers some more curiosity question than anything else, so.
Yeah, as far as, you know, I've got, I put in, well, we've had three hundred dollars in there for conferences and training. Typically, we go to the, somebody. Typically, we go to the, somebody, a few people go to the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commission's annual meeting. We get a lot of information on conservation. I've signed up for it. Tom, I just signed up for it, so sixty bucks apiece. I don't know if anybody else is going. Generally, there's a meeting in the spring called Saving Special Places. I usually haven't been able to go because I'm doing something else for, for the New Hampshire Wildlife Federation at that point. And the rest of it is, you know, also, oh, and the water test maintenance, we've got three hundred and fifty dollars in there. That's been in there for a while. We have one of our meters where we do the water testing of the North River in two places and the Little River in one place, where they go under the, under the roadways, testing for things like turbidity. And this one is the turbidity meter that's been acting up this year. We're probably going to have to get another one. And we're probably looking for a grant to at least cover some of the cost and to go with the three hundred and fifty dollars that we got in.
Are they expensive?
What? Oh, yeah.
What are you testing?
Turbidity.
And then when we bought the original kit, it was over two thousand dollars for the three meters.
We got three meters for two thousand dollars?
Yeah, well, that was a number of years ago. We had a grant for it. So we got that on a grant. Hopefully, we can get a grant for this too. Anyway, that's, so my total for, for this year is, I've got down to two thousand, two thousand and fifty-five dollars. And it was, last year we had eighteen sixty, I guess we reverted back to the, what, the previous year because the voters voted down the budget that got proposed.
Well, I wish everybody's budget came in at two grand for that.
Okay, and that's, essentially, that's it. We have dues going out to the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissioners at three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. And we generally give a hundred dollars a year to Fair Park Regional Greenways, who has some conservation easements in town. The Land Prairie River Water Association, Forest Society, which holds a couple easements, and Southeast Land Trust, which holds a few easements, just to get there. Get in, send the pot there.
Why do we give to those associations there? Well, I guess they don't actually count as...
What's that?
No, I was just kind of thinking out loud. With the other cert, the other services, I was thinking maybe they all belong together, but they, they're different.
Much different.
Yeah.
They're not social services.
They're social services, right, that's what I was... But why do we not handle it the same way?
Anyway, that's, that's my question for the Board of Governors for the year.
Thank you, Sam.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
The pleasure. Public comment. Come on up, please.
Thank you, Skip Servants, in Forty Stage Road. I just wanted to, as Tim said, the Halloween event went off pretty, pretty good. I want to thank those that participated in the incredible planning and execution that the Nottingham Parks and Recreation Department accomplished for this event. The kids, young and old, seemed to have a blast, from what I could see. I was there from twelve to seven, helping as part of the newly-formed Friends of the Nottingham Parks and Recreation.
He was so, he wasn't even alone till I joined him.
He bought a raffle ticket and he didn't win.
Did I win?
He didn't. I changed, no.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't, he put a dead room boot in my car until I bought a ticket.
But I don't think I saw any of you guys there.
I wasn't.
It's okay, I'm just saying, it was, but it was, it was very good. A lot of people, it was packed.
I got the parking notification, I decided to stay away.
The what?
I got the parking notification, decided to stay away.
Field out there was very full of cars.
Yeah.
Very neatly parked and everything. Nobody did it, it all kind of happened.
It happened.
But it was, it was good. Now, you talked about the Legacy Luncheons. Exeter Hospital ALS. I don't even know...
I thought you were talking about Legacy Lunch, now you're talking...
No, no, no. That has always been a very important service, and I know you guys all know that, but...
Are you going to hear what you're hearing?
What? Talking about ALS. ALS, Exeter Hospital, Defense License Support Services. So are there other hospitals around that offer this kind of service that, that we get in on somehow? Or are we going to be hiring paramedics or...
They're talking about it at the county level. The Seacoast Chiefs Association has been meeting regularly and discussing it. As of right now, they've extended, originally, they were going to be stopping the service within two weeks with little notice. And now that's extended out to ninety days. Attorney General's Office got involved, so...
And I don't know what that means now. But you're going to stop a service and somebody tells you to keep going, I don't know what that means.
But realistically, I mean, for Nottingham to bring on a paramedic level, to be paying it a hundred thousand plus.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking the question.
So we're hoping that regionally, you know...
They can do something?
Exactly.
I did have an Exeter, Frisbee Hospital ambulance pass me the other day, and it said "paramedics" across the back of it. I'm not sure what that means, but I think it's just Exeter Hospital, sorry, Frisbee Hospital.
So we do have the service available to us through McGregor, but their priority is German.
German, yeah, right. Nobody else, nothing Concord Way or anything?
I, I...
No, that's, that's fine, I'm just, I'm concerned, I figured I'd ask this question. And that's it, thank you very much.
Yeah, got to thank Beth Israel, isn't that who bought Exeter?
Beth Israel, yeah.
Comes down to the mighty dollar.
Oh, yeah, oh, no.
Isn't it great?
It's just, you know, that moves things down the road and are we doing anything for it?
Well, like...
Well, we'd like to see...
There's a number of towns in the county are working together to...
Yeah, okay.
It'd be better to have a coalition than it would be to be an individual. Yeah, or something, you know.
Yeah, all right, great.
There's stuff happening, what? We don't know.
All right. Review act items are pretty much our next meeting on Monday. We know what we're doing.
Lots of budget reviews.
Lots of budget reviews, that pretty much is going to take us for that, and then we'll worry about the...
I'm triple booked, so I will be here, but probably later, just FYI. I'll be right in this building with two other meetings at the same time.
Uh, so we'll go over that, and then maybe at the brief end of that meeting, when we get done, we'll just clarify quickly what we're going to do for November fourth. We already kind of had November fourth kind of figured out.
Yeah, it's going to be an early one in the next eight weeks.
Right. So try to make that up. It's going to be a long day for all of us, but...
Do any of you have a possibility of maybe starting a little bit earlier than anything?
No.
Just in case we have to do a budget overflow?
Yep.
Yep.
I don't think I'll go six, and that's the best, I mean, six makes it earlier than I come stranded or five. But that's the best that I can do.
And we got to go scope places for the monument. We have homework.
Well, at least we know we're going to be looking in the general area here, so...
I know that it would be great, but I just don't think it will, will work. Especially the base of the monument has to go down quite a bit in the ground, and I think it would disrupt what's under the ground in front.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's there, so... I was just asking, just...
It's sizable.
Yeah, I'll take a good peek at that tomorrow when it's nice and sunny out when I... We will, right now, we are going into non-public. Once we leave non-public, we will be closing the meeting out. So thank you very much Nottingham for listening, if you're on there.
I'll make a motion to go to non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A and B. As a void.
Second, we have a motion of second, this takes a roll call vote. Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Tim DaBrio.
Hi, Tim DaBrio. Good night, Nottingham.